Call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. And please let me begin by reading for the last time, the script for remotely conducted meetings. So as a preliminary matter, this is the Grafton Board of Library Trustees. And permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated are present and can hear me. Marty?
Present.
All right, Doug?
Here.
John?
Here.
And Dana?
Here.
Okay, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth? And Debbie? Okay, Debbie, I can... All right, I think we can all say she's here, we just can't hear her.
Are you using my mic too?
All right, well, I think it's pretty obvious she's here, okay. All right, and so, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Grafton Board of Library Trustees is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. And as such, we, hold on. We, all right. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you will find on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Grafton Board of Library Trustees is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. We are now turning to the first agenda item, but before I do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our meetings and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. All right, and finally, each vote for this meeting will be conducted by roll call. So we can get started. Our first agenda for the evening is to approve the minutes for the March 22nd and April 26th meetings. Can I get a motion on those?
I make a motion to approve the meetings from the previous meetings.
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right, so I'll say Karen, aye. Marty?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
All right, I declare the motion passed. The next item up is to approve the bills for warrants number 39, 40, 42, 43, 44, and 45. And I have a motion to approve those, please. Marty?
I move to approve warrants 39, 40, 42, 43, 44, and 45.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, and any questions or comments? Okay, and so Karen, Marty?
I just do have a question, sort of for the record. What happened to 41? Warrant 41 is not on that list, it's out of work.
I believe that was the week of Passover and I was not available to sign bills and we decided to spare you all the burden of having to come in and review them and sign them and then for Eileen to send them. So we just skipped over that week and consolidated them all into the next week.
Thank you. Glad we have that for the record.
That makes sense. All right, wonderful, thank you. Right, so Karen, aye. Marty?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Dana?
Aye.
Okay, the next item we are discussing tonight is the MHC grant. And for these three items under new business, I will push it over to you, Beth.
Thank you. So we're starting with MHC grant, which is Mass Historic Commission. They offer a grant round for preservation every other year or so, where they will do up to a 50% matching grant if a project is eligible as a restoration or preservation, not as a repair. So we worked with David L. King, who did a cupola restoration for us that completed in 2004. The original architect on that project from 20 years ago came and looked with his engineer, examined the cupola, which started leaking back in fall of 2022, and did some evaluation of the interior of the cupola, the flashing, the shingles, the wooden louvers, to determine what was causing it to leak intermittently. It's only really happened once into the historic reading room. And then for him to develop a plan with his firm to remediate the leaking and restore it so that it doesn't leak in the future, which would protect and preserve the room directly underneath, which was partially donor funded and renovated as part of our Mass Public Library Construction Program grant. So I worked with David King, a little bit with William Blake and various other agencies and departments in town to come up with an almost 200-page grant application that was due March 17th. At that time, we still didn't have an estimate or hadn't done a leak test, didn't have all the information we needed. But we sent the application in, got a checklist of what was missing, and then had to the end of April to complete that grant and submit it, which we were able to do. We submitted every piece of the project and then they had a question, which was the fine print of the grant is while they will do up to a 50% match, they require the grant recipient to have 75% of the cost of the project with cash in hand, because like many grants, it is a reimbursement grant. So the estimate to restore and preserve the cupola from David King's professional estimator came out to $218,000 and a little bit, 218, 228, I believe is the final number, which requires a match of $109,114 from Town of Grafton, from any pool of resources available. Now, I've brought this project to Capital Improvement Committee multiple times since we became aware in 2019 that it had potential to leak because there was normal wear and tear and weather deterioration on the cupola. And without a quote in hand, I had only gotten a verbal estimate back in 2019 as we were working on the construction project, but without an actual quote, which requires an investment of money to get somebody to get a team out to do the research and produce a quote, I couldn't get funding through Town of Grafton Resources. So not through CPC at that time, not through community preservation. So, and I can't speak for, say, community preservation money. While it is an eligible project, they have their own paperwork and format to follow through. CPC money is collected through tax revenue and then we vote on it at town meeting, like tonight. So we couldn't get an estimate for the current issue until the end of April, which meant we couldn't get any money committed from any other town body in time to submit the remaining paperwork for the grant by the end of last month. The Board of Trustees has $170,000 right now in their state aid accounts, about $40,000 in expendable trust, and we have $33,000 in our gift account. So combining all those, we actually have the total needed to pay for the project. However, we committed at a previous meeting to pay $28,000, up to $28,000, I believe, for temporary staffing. And I'm frequently coming to this board for expenses that we had to trim from our operating expenses so we could put money into staffing. Things that are sort of not really considered extra have been part of our operating expenses, but that we can't squeak the money out to pay for, like dues and membership, travel, marketing, staff development, and then unexpected bills. So we do a very careful job of budgeting to the bone. And then even with our new building, things are coming out of warranty, problems arise, and we need to put money into things like emergency HVAC repair. So while we have the money technically in all of the library coffers to cover the entire cost of the repair, it is grant eligible and not all that money is really available because it's spoken for for other things. And we've been in the habit of keeping some money aside for emergencies that arise. The budget timeline is we're budgeting a year and a half out and can't always anticipate what the needs are going to be in the future. So Mass Historic Commission received our application and said, well, I see that you want to go to CPC to ask for money, but you've already missed the May town meeting deadline because their process started six months ago for tonight's funding for CPC projects. That means we have to push it out till October. And again, I can't speak for their money. So I'm requesting that the board demonstrate their stewardship of the building and to fund up to 50% the matching part of the grant, $109,114, and had to send in an accounting sheet that shows that we actually have the 75% required match should expenses go over or should we not be able to secure any other town funding. The very long and complicated explanation, it was unclear at all. I'm happy to answer questions, but the question in front of you tonight is can we commit $109,114? And I would need a letter of support from this board, which Karen had drafted one, but there was a question mark and the original letter said up to $20,000, which is not a 50% match. And without my ability to secure any other matching funds, this is the only place that money could come from. And if we should, you can choose to vote no, this is your money to administrate. Should we vote no, we would have to withdraw the grant application. It's been a long time working on. And then there would be no potential matching funding for probably another two years in the next grant round. And the cupola needs to be repaired. While it has not leaked again, we don't know when it will deteriorate and begin leaking again, and we want to protect our assets.
All right, Beth, thank you so much for that detailed explanation there. So I'll put it out to the group here. Doug?
Yeah, nice, I mean, definitely a lot of work putting that together. Thanks for, and thanks for the detailed email. The, I had a couple of questions. The quote itself, has anyone, did anyone else review that? I don't know if anyone from like the building committee reviewed that. I mean, I'm always amazed the cost of things, so I'm not really surprised. But you know, there are some line items that seem super high that I was surprised at. Now, you know, regardless of the quote, right? If we go out, if we go through with the project, you go out and get bids, that doesn't mean it's going to match that quote. It could be less, it could be more, of course. So did anyone on the building committee look at that yet or not?
So the building committee, their job is to take care of the construction project.
Yeah, I know.
So they're, so at this point, their job is to either, you know, give feedback on things that we still have punch lists on that they might be happy or not happy with, and then to pay the bills. So as a sort of a new problem that arose during construction, it's not really construction related and it falls to this board.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, we follow public procurement in that just to get someone to come out and do that preliminary work, we had to, you know, go out to bid and ask companies to submit a quote for how much the preliminary work would be so they could come up with a quote. So basically, the cost of the construction piece of the project is going to be, you know, quite a bit more, you know, $20,000 to get the preliminary estimate and then it's, you know, over $200,000 to execute what they think needs to be done.
Yeah, okay, so then my second...
If we compare that to the construction grant, so you might not, might or might not remember, there was a preliminary grant round every time the mass, you know, public library program construction grant is in effect. And we spent, you know, $75,000, I think, to procure an architect who could do those drawings and schematics. And our project ended up, you know, at $16.6 million total. So I don't know, it seems like it's close to what it would be. And we have to remember too, that post-COVID, everything is so much more expensive. And just looking at our library project from the estimate in 2011, which was like 11.6 million for a larger building, and then five years later for 2020, 21, we have 16.6 million for a smaller, significantly smaller building. Construction escalation is ridiculously expensive. So the original quote, which was just a roofer looking at it and going, it's going to cost you 80 grand to remediate what's going on with your cupola, it's going to need some attention relatively soon. It's been, that was five years ago, almost five years ago. So price has gone up.
Yeah, so then my second question was just a clarification. So the grant itself would pay for 50% of the cost. Does that include, like, if we were to get a CPC grant? Or that CPC grant would offset that 50, other 50%?
Yeah, so they would award us a 50% match. So we would still be on the hook for $109,114. So then we would, I would propose that you go to town meeting for October to try and get CPC to pay for some portion of that.
Okay.
Use the trustee contribution from whatever monies we have available.
Great.
Yeah, and I do also want to thank and note that Capital Campaign has paid or committed to paying the initial $20,000 for that preliminary exploratory work to secure us the estimate and schematics and scope of work that were required for the grant application. So to sort of not move forward or drop it, also kind of waste that $20,000 investment.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Doug, for that question. Anyone else have a question? Yep, John?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, but, because I saw that we didn't have an estimate for ongoing maintenance. But I, but I think that we should immediately come up with a plan for that after this because essentially, what, what this $200,000 equates to, you know, if, let's say it lasts another 20 years, kind of un-maintenanced, that's about 10 grand a year. That, and that seems like a lot of money to me. So maybe we could put in some, some maintenance plan to say, spend 20 grand every five years, or hopefully much less than that, to just go in and make sure that, you know, the paint isn't completely peeling off and that things haven't been ripped off the cupola by wind or other, you know, birds or whatever it is. So that's just my, my thoughts on that.
Thank you, John, with that. Marty? Oh, you're on mute.
I beg your pardon. My question is not, is not responsive to John, but I don't mean to diminish anything that John just asked. But vis a vis what we are being asked to do tonight. Somebody's got to frame a motion on this in some way. And I'm not sure that I understand it quite well enough. We're being asked to approve a request for a grant? Is that exactly what it is? Or could you just sort of restate it again in a way that encapsulates what we are going to, either going to vote on? Whether we approve or not, I'm not sure.
Sure. I am looking for a motion to approve a newly drafted letter of support from the Board of Library Trustees, committing up to $109,114 as a match for the Mass Historic Commission Preservation Grant Round.
Beth, I just want to ask, now, so that's half, but were they asking for us to make, oh, so they only want to make sure we have the 75%? We don't have to commit the 75?
Correct. They wanted account reports that showed balances totaling up to, I think it's 100, almost 164,000 held.
Okay.
I do want to go back. Somebody asked about, like, has anybody else looked at this? There wasn't, like, I don't know who else would have looked at it. With, with it coming on the 26th of April and due on the 28th, there was no time for anyone else to review it. But William Blake looked at it and he's been, he's been doing some procurement for the town and some construction stuff for the town. And we didn't have more or different or better estimates because we did, again, we followed public procurement. We asked, I think, six or eight different contractors who specialize in historic buildings, and only one contractor got back to us. So that fulfills our procurement request, but also means that we didn't have anything to compare it to. Just to be clear. No one was interested in the project enough to pull something together.
Okay, Dana?
Yeah, I, yeah, I understood, I appreciate what Beth just said as far as the review of the question, but I understand it. Yeah, I, what you just pointed out, I was going to say, my, my understanding is this is an estimate. So we can really refine it. We needed it, we needed this estimate as soon as possible. So I think, I think we did the due diligence that we can do at this point. We can do more later, once, you know, once we have a grant in hand. And I think that, I think it's a very worthy project. I think we should be, we should do it. I do think we did discuss prior to this that we want to be able to, one of the issues that Grafton has is we have no facilities manager. And so we will have to figure out if that situation remains so. We as trustees are going to have to figure out a way. I guess we're going to be, we're going to have to be facility managers for our building and ensure that any of this, anything that needs to be done in the future will be done for maintenance, which is huge. And what has been pointed out to me is that we've had some issues with, like, the the air conditioning and the HVAC. Some of this stuff, as we have to remember, we were, we chose, we had, I guess we had to choose the lowest bidder. And so that resulted in some of the systems probably not being state of the art. So that's, I think, why we're feeling some of the pain from some of the monies we now have to put into some of these new systems. So I think the cupola falls within that line. We're going to have to, we're going to have to really monitor it. You know, not unless there's another party within the, within the town that steps up to do that. And I think that's, that is a good thing to discuss because I think that's a reality right now. And who knows if that's going to change in three or four years, I don't know. So that's what I wanted to say. And I, David King is a very good architect. I would trust that he would come up with a good estimate. And he, my understanding is he's going to be, he's going to be supervising this project, which I think is a really necessary element. And I would approve any extra monies that he might have to spend to do that.
Speaking of that, there is, there is no contingency built into this grant. MHC does not allow for you to build in an extra 25% or so for things that unexpectedly go wrong. So although the $218,000 is an estimate, that doesn't mean that it's going to be that price. It could be more, it could be less. But there's, there's no contingency and that would have to come from another source. So that might be another piece of why they want you to have that 75% cash in hand because things sometimes do escalate unexpectedly. I do also...
Yeah, I have another question, but I was just going to say, I understand that, but I think, my understanding now is this is much greater than I thought of a grant we could get. You're telling me that if our quote is like $218,000, they would give us 50% of that if they think, if they deem that we are worthy. So that is fantastic because last year, I looked through most of the grants I saw were between 40,000 and 50,000. And there was, there was a library, but it wasn't a general, a library like we have. So that means they've, they're, they're showing interest in our application, which I like a lot. And Beth has spent a lot of time with them and they have given to the Town of Grafton before. So I'm feeling better about this. And I think, I think if we, if we can make this happen, it's really, it's really terrific. And I, I think there's a good chance we can get it. And then that will help us also be able to get some more monies from other, other parties because we've already, we've been given a grant from this group again. And that is really big to get a mass preservation grant. That is really a big thing, especially if it's at this level.
All right, all right, thank you. Is that all right, Doug?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify some things about the trusts. Well, first of all, I do think it's, I mean, it's, it's the town's responsibility. I think the right funding source would have been one of those capital projects. So for the library trust accounts, some of those do have exclusions. You know, they have to be, they have to be, you know, for books or something. I think the largest one, which is that Fisher and the Wheelock are both for structure and infrastructure. So I think those are both relevant for the cupola. If I, I have to go through them again, but so that, which is a good thing because those are the ones that have the most money. I'm not sure about the library incentive state grant. Beth, can you clarify? I didn't, I know that's for services, but I didn't know if that... I mean, if I look at their, the website, it says to support improved library, public libraries, I'm sorry, public library service. But I don't know if that means we can use that to expense on some of the building.
Okay, I would have to follow up with MBLC. I thought that they were all unrestricted.
Okay, I mean, maybe it just, I mean, it says it encourages, so maybe it is unrestricted, but okay.
I would say that if, if the historic reading room would need to be closed off because the ceiling plaster is falling onto the heads of patrons, they can't use that room, which is full of graphic novels, magazines, newspapers, and is used daily as study space. So it would prohibit people from using that space as a library service.
Yep. And, and then the only other comment is, right, if we take money away, let's say we take it from the library incentive, that's going to reduce the amount we're going to have for any future use. But we have been saving it up, right? We've been saving it for many years for, for this construction process, project.
Only a few years. After COVID, we started getting a lot more in state aid. So when I started 10 years ago, we're averaging about 20,000 a year and it's crept up. I think this year, we stood to take in $42,000.
Okay, so it's only been a couple of years.
Yeah, so we'll expend and then, you know, we're getting another check in, I think by July 1st, and then another one around December for the next half of the year. So the money is continuously coming in so long as, you know, the legislature continues to vote to put money into state aid. It's only gone up in the last 10 years, knock on wood, it will continue.
All right, any other comment? Or is someone ready to make a motion?
I need a little more clarity on, but again, Beth, I'm sorry to be dense here, but I'm dealing with in my head that either we do this, or we're cooked. We have to wait two years to try again. And if there is damage that must be repaired, we may not have the funds to repair the damage from a leaky cupola that, God, I mean, water can do a lot of damage. So it seems to me, the choices are between committing money or, and getting other people's money to help us are not and being potentially in a lot of trouble. I don't, I don't see a way out of doing this other than making the request. My opinion. So what we need is a letter of support from, from the Board of Trustees, which I take it would come from the chair, Karen, to commit $109,114 as a match for a grant from the, from the Mass Historical Commission. Does it need any more detail than that?
So I took the letter that Karen had drafted and made some edits and then shared it out.
Oh, this is, this is the revised letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here it is.
Yeah, because the original letter didn't have those numbers.
Right, I missed the fact that the revised letter was in our package. I apologize for that.
I figured if Karen didn't want me to do it and wasn't happy with it, she would have spoken up and we would have pulled it. But the, the very passionate plea at the beginning about Town of Grafton and the historic district is all hers.
So...
I updated the twenty thousand dollar request.
All right, so, uh, Karen, I'm prepared to make a, a motion, which is as follows. I will move that we approve the letter of support from the Board of Trustees by you as Chair, um, that has been drafted. Um, I don't have, I don't know the date on it. Is there a date on it?
I put today's date.
All right, dated May, two thousand twenty-three, to commit a hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars, uh, to repair the cupola uh, as a match for a grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
Can we use restore and preserve instead of repair? It's a flag for the grant funders.
All right, so as a match
Yeah.
for a grant
Restore and Preserve.
Massachusetts Historical Commission to preserve and protect, and protect, um, the enduring visual child? Is that what we're asking for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Marty. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, wonderful. Any further discussion? Hey, hearing none. Uh, Karen, aye? Marty?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
All right, I declare the motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone. That was a big one. All right, now they just go down in funding requests, so now we're down to forty five hundred dollars. A big difference there for the circuit board for the door opener. Beth?
So the, uh, doors at the parking lot, which are ADA compliant, also have an electronic configured where you can wave at the button either as you come in, in the middle of vestibule, or go out, that makes the doors open, and they are fairly heavy. And the doors have been there for than a year, so they're not under warranty anymore. And the circuit board that talked to the automatic door opener buttons failed unexpectedly, um, and we needed to do an emergency repair. Um, the cost of the equipment and the installation and the diagnostics from Chandler, who is the vendor for the door, was forty five hundred dollars. Um, it's outside of the scope of the compartment, construction project, and the bill needs to be paid. It's not maintenance, it is an emergency repair.
And what does this actually include?
Um, diagnostics, the piece of equipment, which is a circuit board, and the installation of the circuit board, and then reconnection to get the buttons to work again when you wave at them. So, and, and the work has been done. It was completed, um, around the twentieth of April.
Yep, so basically, right now, we are voting on paying this bill.
So this is just a quote. We will get an invoice. It's, it's gonna be exactly this cost.
Yeah. That sort of thing. All right, Marty?
This is, and this is from regular funds. This is not from state aid. Is that correct?
No, it's from state aid. There's no money in the building and maintenance budget to cover the cost, because we're at May, and that budget has been just about expended with all the things that we had planned to spend on building maintenance throughout the fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll just say that, I mean, I don't, I know computers and stuff, but, uh, forty five hundred dollars to replace a circuit board sounds pretty steep to me, especially if it failed after one year about, uh, do, I guess, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna have any problem approving this, but I'm just curious if we know if this is likely to happen again. Like, is this from people smashing the, you know, the button too hard, or, or is it something that just, you know, it just failed, uh, by chance?
It just failed. And, you know, similarly, there's, there's sections of our HVAC system that just are failing. So, and I, like, I can't budget for unexpected mechanical or equipment or technology failure. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Doug?
Can you remind us if, I mean, I'm sure we approached them for warranty. I mean, it's pretty unusual for circuit boards to fail at all, in, in most cases.
Yeah, I know. So we technically had substantial completion on July first, twenty twenty-one. And the doors were operable and installed on that date, so we're sort of like coming up on two years and just well past warranty phase, and they would not honor it under warranty.
So it was just bad timing for something that does not typically happen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and, um, because we're voting on next year's budget tonight at town meeting, so it's too late to put this into next year's budget and pay them after July first.
You, we can't. The work took place in this fiscal year, so it has to be paid in this fiscal year.
Okay. All right.
I mean, we're already, we're, we're also net thirty for Tana Grafton, so invoices are supposed to be paid, and often there's a penalty if you're late.
All right, we can't push it out. All right, uh, Dana?
Sorry to say, I think this is an example of what some of the great products that we didn't get. You know, some of the great equipment we didn't get. I think we got, you know, it wasn't terrific. Wasn't the most expensive out there. I don't know. This is what I think we're gonna see happening a bit here and there for a while, but anyway.
Let's hope not.
Well, I don't know. I don't like what I hear already. And we weren't, I don't know how operational the building was. I know it was open, but for a while, people weren't in it, if I recall. So, and then we had COVID, right? So, um, I'm not, it is what it is, and I don't like it, but what can we do? Hopefully, we can have money set aside next year, if we can, or the, or the year after. Maybe even if we just start putting a bit aside. You know, we gotta maintain the building. It's new, it's gonna have problems, but unfortunately, I don't think this is the last of them. But I don't know, maybe it's just a couple main systems, I don't know what to say. Anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in. But, yeah, we got it. We, we, we've gotta okay this.
All right. So, um, any other comments, or is someone ready to make a motion to pay this from state aid?
I'll make a motion to pay the forty five hundred dollars, um, out of state aid.
Okay, I second it. Second?
I second it.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll say, uh, Karen, aye? Marty?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
All right, I declare the motion passed. Um, the last item on our agenda this evening is a funding request, twenty five hundred dollars for HVAC maintenance, and this would also come out of state aid.
Yeah, so this is kind of like a, a timing issue. HVAC is contracted through the building department for all town buildings. So I just get a notification of how much the estimate is, so that I can put it into my next year's budget and cover the cost. Um, again, we, we opened in, you know, July twenty twenty-one, um, my budget for FY twenty-two was due that November, December. Um, and I didn't have the estimate until way, you know, way past the budget was approved. And Renaud came to do the first con, part of the contract, and we had to sort of figure out how we were going to pay for that. We've basically been about a payment behind in having our ongoing HVAC maintenance completed just because of the timing of my not getting the estimate that I needed to build it into the budget and pay for it out of the budget. So we were going to have three payments of like five thousand dollars due within the one fiscal year, when ordinarily, we should only have two payments, because it's semi-annual maintenance. So I went to them, it's like, I, I can't keep trying to push the bill off, um, and, and it needs to get paid, so we owe them five thousand dollars that isn't covered in the contract, that wasn't covered by a purchase order, that wasn't covered in the budget. They cut the bill in half, and I said, let me try and find the money to finish paying up what's owed, so we can get back on track with our regularly scheduled contracted work. So this is a partial service fee. It's half of what we actually owe them, and it's for preventative maintenance. They come in the fall to make sure all the filters are clean, so we can turn on the heating system. And they just came out at the end of April, and we had the very warm day, actually, it was mid-April, um, to make sure that everything was clean and ready to switch over to air conditioning.
Okay, all right. Thanks for that explanation, Beth. Um, anyone have any questions or comments before we get a motion here? No? Okay, um, so would someone like to make a motion to pay for this out of state aid? Marty?
I, I move that we pay the renewal bill for HVAC out of state aid in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I'll say Karen, aye? Marty?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Dana?
Aye.
All right, I declare the motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, let's see, the next few items on the agenda are table till the next meeting. So our next meetings are now the town meeting tonight at seven PM at the high school. Uh, at which time Beth will be answering any questions that may arise about the library budget. And then the next Board of Library Trustees meeting is May twenty-fourth at seven PM. Um, any last minute things here? Yep, Roger?
Well, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm reserving my, uh, comments on the Roman numeral eight publicly.
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Karen and, and Marty for your service. Um, you know, that's, it's, uh, not everyone wants to serve on a committee, not everyone wants to take leadership positions. Um, there's so much that goes on, you know, behind the scenes too, and so, um, just wanted to, to make that comment as you end your terms.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you. Uh, Carrie, I see your hand up. Can you hear me? Oh, there you are.
Yes, hi, sorry, I was trying to, I, start the video and unmute at the same time, so sorry about that. So, um, I'd like to second Roger's, um, uh, appreciation for yourself, Karen, and for Marty. Thank you for your wonderful service. Um, we're so appreciative, you know, of all the time that you've committed, um, and, you know, the, the dedication. Um, so the next meeting, you said, is gonna be May twenty-fourth. Um, so will you be planning to attend those, that next meeting?
I'm actually going to be out of town at a conference. So I would not be attending it even if I was still on the board, so.
Okay, well, um, uh, thank you again, and, um, and I also would like to, to thank the board for, uh, stepping up to approving the repairs. Um, sorry, the restoration and, and, yeah, restoration and preservation of our beautiful cupola. Um, I think that, um, you know, really shows a, a good commitment to our library by our, our board, and it's, um, very much appreciated, so thank you.
All right, okay, and I'll just mention thanks to Roger and Carrie for coming to some of our meetings, so you're ready, um, or um, you're places on the board. All right, so.
I'm excited.
Opportunity.
Yes, wonderful. So, um, I declared the meeting adjourned at five forty-four PM. No, 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 never mind, erase that, erase that. All right, yeah.
Nice.
It's a good try. We have to vote to a, but I, no, I had raised my hand to also say thank you to Karen and Marty, uh, and remind people to come out and vote on the sixteenth next week, so we can vote in our next trustees. Thank you, Roger and Carrie for voting.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I don't say. Do I have a motion to adjourn before I unilaterally do it myself?
I just wanna say thanks, Karen, and thanks, Marty. Doug and I both thank you. We appreciate it. You guys have done awesome.
Marty?
Yes.
It's my last official act as a I move that we adjourn.
Ah, wonder. Thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, so Karen, aye? Uh, Marty?
Gratefully, aye.
All right, Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Dana?
Aye.
All right, I declare the meeting adjourned at five forty-five PM.